This is the Warren Board of Selectmen. It is Thursday, December 4th, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. Okay, we can do the political allegiance.
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we are being recorded on WCAT going out. We're live, right? Live and streaming, so if anyone else is recording, let us know. And if you're gonna come up and address the board, just give your name and if you're a citizen or who you represent. So, let's start. We're gonna open up the public under Chapter 40, Section 56, for the purpose of determining the tax allocation among the property classes for fiscal year 2026. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Take your way.
We are here, so Jeff Feeny is here.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Feeny. I'm resident here in Warren. So this presentation is just for illustrative purposes. The purpose of this hearing is for the Board of Selectmen to receive information from the Board of Assessments to decide on a factor to establish the allocation of the tax levy. This meeting does not determine what the actual tax rate will be. No tax rate has been approved for fiscal year 2026 as of yet. Final tax rate will change slightly when submitting to the Department of Revenue. Excess levy figures will change slightly due to rounding. So the Board of Selectmen will vote to determine if the town of Warren will have a single tax rate or a split tax rate. The Board of Selectmen may vote to adopt a residential exemption and/or a small commercial exemption.
Okay, so for FY fiscal year 26, we saw that for '25, that was our levy. Our levy was $10,188,317, and that was our tax rate last year for '21. Our levy growth this year was $254,733. We had new growth dollars of $104,221, and that was actually an increase of $14,811 from last year. We did not have any amended new growth. Our levy before the debt exclusion is $10,548,271. We do have our debt exclusion, which is from the improvements that were done at the schools. And our maximal allowable levy for this year is $10,588,223. So, for what we have on the next page, we're looking at what our options might be based on if we had a proposed levy And you can see how what the tax rate would be if you voted for a factor of one. What would happen if we did it at 1.05? What would happen if it's 1.10, 1.25, and then at the maximum levy, how much it would impact commercial and industrial? So there's quite a shift there. If we did the maximum shift of 50%, it just lowers the single-family tax bill by $336, but it increases the average commercial and industrial property $2,121. And this was based on an average single-family home, if it's assessed at $310,728, and an average commercial and industrial property that's valued at $283,906. Okay, so historically, Warren has voted for a factor of one. Looking at 2026, if the tax rate was $14.93 and with the values of the commercial, industrial, and personal property, residential would be at 87 for the levy percent, and commercial and industrial and personal property would be at 13. The next exemption that would be voted on for the board would be residential exemption. The board may vote to adopt the residential exemption. This exemption does not change the total taxable value for the residential properties. This exemption shifts the tax burden between the owner-occupied and rental properties. Presently, there are 20 municipalities out of the 351. There were an increase of two municipalities. Last year, there was 18. Westingsbury joined them in Eastham. Adopting of this exemption, due to having a high percentage of rental properties, the exemption percentage is as low as 5% and you could vote up to the maximum of 35%. This exemption really would not help the Warren taxpayer, wouldn't benefit from this exemption due to the majority of the residential properties being owner-occupied. The other one is small commercial exemption. The Board of Selectmen may adopt a small commercial exemption, the exemption to owners of commercial property valued at less than a million and the occupied by businesses with less than 10 employees. The maximum amount of the exemption is 10% for the assessed value of that qualified property. The adoption would result in higher tax rate for all commercial and industrial properties, but would not affect the residential, open space, or personal property classes of the property. So this exemption again does not benefit the small business owners, but the owner of the real estate. In FY '25, there were only 14 communities who adopted the small commercial exemption, and those communities are listed there. And they're the same as last year. So Warren does not have any open space discount. We have no land in Warren classified as 200 open space. So, in summary, what it is that the board may need to vote on? They may move to take no action relative to the adoption of an open space discount for fiscal year 2026. They may move to take no action relative to the adoption of a residential exemption for fiscal year 2026. They may move to take no action relative to the adoption of a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2026, or they may move to adopt a residential factor of one.
Question? You're good?
I'm good.
I'm just curious. We have new growth of like 100,000. Where did that come from? Or what's involved with that number?
For the, oh, that would come from commercial new housing?
Yeah, that's my question. Do you know? Is it all new housing or is it?
Oh, no. It'd be new housing.
It was a mix?
A mix, yeah. New housing or remodels.
Oh, okay.
Or a mix.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no questions. Anybody wanna make a motion? You wanna have a discussion?
Well, we close the public hearing, right?
Well, you can ask if anybody in the public wants to comment.
In the public have a question or comment? Okay.
We did not receive any written comments. We did solicit as well, and this meeting has been posted for two weeks now.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I guess we could, there's no other discussion? We could close the hearing?
This is the same thing we've done each year.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have enough commercial, the tax commercial, because we'll force out what we have here.
Yeah.
And so it will be beneficial to us, and we can't give exemptions to residents because, you know, a lot of it's exactly the same. You know, it's occupied by landlords and stuff, and it would cause problems for them. That would be passed on to the residents anyways if we taxed them more for rental properties. Anything we do other than this would hurt somebody else.
Okay. I'm good. Okay.
Easy, easy.
All right, so you need a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the tax exemption.
Classify that tax classification meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DuFrenette?
Betty Betty's aye.
Richa Harker aye. The public hearing is closed, and then we have to take each one of these separately, so I'll take motions on these.
I'll make a motion to take no action relative to the adoption of an open space discount for fiscal year 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DuFrenette?
Betty Betty's aye.
Richa Harker aye.
I'll make a motion to take no action relative to the adoption of residential exemption for fiscal year 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DuFrenette?
Betty Betty's aye.
Richa Harker aye.
Make a motion to take no action relative to the adoption of small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DuFrenette?
Betty Betty's aye.
Richa Harker? Aye.
And I'll make a motion to adopt the residential factor of one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DuFrenette?
Betty Betty's aye.
Richa Harker aye.
All those motions carried. Thanks. Discussion on the next steps for the public safety studies for 968 Main Street and 1012 Main Street. So that's Cornerstone Bank Building and an expansion on the fire station A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So for you this evening is a discussion that was asked, to be put on by our Chair, Richa Harker, on our next steps. Obviously, the special that we just had a couple of weeks ago awarded the funding to conduct these assessments, okay? Now it is our job to take that funding and to retain the services of a licensed architect and engineer. And those, you know, we have been working with a firm, Tecton, who has been procured to conduct a feasibility study initially of a public safety complex. Now, through the board's direction and through the public's comments, we're looking at other options. And these other options could potentially be the relocating of the police station to a modern-day building, the Cornerstone Bank Building at 968 Main Street. So making that building, bringing it to a modern-day police station, and what would that potentially look like in cost? You know, so an assessment would need to be made on, you know, the structural stability of the building, the roof, the HVAC, the sturdiness of the building, accessibility issues of the building. That would have to be looked at and assessed. You know, I think it would be in the town's best interest to have an architect, an engineer, do that type of an assessment, who has, who is qualified and has experience with doing, you know, public safety facilities in Massachusetts, knowing the code, understanding the, what is required. I think it's critically important. You know, there's several different, you know, doctors out there that handle on different aspects of the medical profession, but when you are in need of surgery, you go see a surgeon. And I think it's critically important that, you know, that we hire somebody who has some type of qualifications and experience in dealing with these types of facilities. So, the board has, you know, put on for the next steps at the 1012 Main Street property. That was approved for an assessment for possibly looking at making some updates to 1012 Main Street, Fire Station A, possibly adding on some bays on Fire Station A, and what that would potentially cost and look like, and if it would be somewhat economically feasible. So, you know, those studies have to be done, and it's gonna take some time to do those studies. You know, I know that there's been chatter and discussion about, you know, you know, potentially sending this out to some type of formal procurement or bid. Chapter 30B of the Procurement Act allows, you know, a municipality who wants to hire an architect or an engineer, an exemption for these types of services. So these don't necessarily have to go out to a level of procurement, these types of specialized assessments. It's certainly the board's choice if you want to. You certainly can, and we can certainly do that. You know, I think where people are getting somewhat confused is the designer selection phase, and that's more along the lines down the road when we actually know what type of project we're looking at and where, you know, we have maybe some funding already put aside for it, and we already know what we're gonna do. We still are in the options phase, and this is all pre-planning and pre-study. We're studying these things for getting options to lay out on the table. We don't know if it's gonna be at the bank building. We don't know if it's gonna be next to the highway garage. We don't know. We don't know if we're gonna do a standalone building or a public safety complex. We don't know that yet. So we're just getting options and to do assessments, okay? And when you're dealing with these types of projects, it's in the best interest of the town to get qualifying people who have the experience in these types of settings. You know, there's a ton of architects out there. There's a ton of engineers out there, but there's a unique niche that handle public safety. And I think qualified individuals in that niche should be considered.
Okay, so I've talked to a few people who've said, "Well, why don't you just get the building inspector, plumbing inspector, electrical inspector in the bank building and give us a yea or nay on that?"
So, you know, I understand that concept, but that's not at the stage we're in. The building inspector, the electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, they will be down the road inspecting the work of the contractor that is selected to either do the work or build construction. They're gonna be inspecting work. They don't do planning analysis for the town.
They're not designers.
They're not designers. They're not architects. They're not engineers.
Yeah. The other question is, why didn't we build in environmental in this first sort of go-around now? Especially for the bank.
Because, like I said, we are not focused in on one particular site yet, and it could change. And why do you wanna spend environmental on a site that it could change? So, once we focus in on a site, if we know this is gonna be our option, and this is what we're going for, and we're all behind it, then spend the money on environmental.
Right, because a new building, we don't have to do that. With the Cornerstone building, we're gonna have to look at lead and asbestos and whatever else they look at.
You know, there is some, you know, I did put a little bit of extra money into the article, not a lot, a little bit, to do maybe some initial hazmat assessments, not a full-blown environmental, but some hazmat assessments that would help us guide if this building was to, you know, go down the tracks this way, you know, we would know what we would be looking at for what type of environmental assessments we would need to do in the future.
So we see these things, we're gonna have to allocate for that.
Right.
Okay. All right. Question?
Oh, yes. So my concerns are, why aren't we using Mr. Funtman's engineer? What was found out about that engineer?
Well, you know, I don't know much about that engineer, you know, but I don't know if he has any experience with public safety complexes or police stations. You know, there's a big difference between, you know, like I said, somebody who has this type of experience in this niche and somebody who doesn't. You know, I don't know his qualifications. The one-page assessment that was provided to us did not state his qualifications or his experience related to public safety buildings.
And as far as the bank, I have a serious concern with that, because this was a property we did look at in, in '22. And I, we're looking at this building in 2022, and we actually met with the bank president on this one. And we were in the process of getting this bank building donated to us for free. And then somebody came in for a bid, a mysterious buyer, and offered money for the building. And therefore, they wouldn't entertain the deal of giving the building to us for free, because even if we didn't use it for a public safety building or a police station, which we found out it just wasn't gonna do, that we could have used it for something else within the town. Maybe some offices or something could have been used for. But we were, the building was purchased for $285,000. We did meet with Mr. Funtman after that, because he wanted to show us the building and talk to us about it. So we did do a walkthrough with the building, on Mr. Funtman, on the building. And at that point, he offered us to sell the building to us for, what, $800,000 or $700,000?
Something around there.
Something. It was very high. It was almost triple of what the bank was, what he paid for. So, that was definitely a no-go at that point, especially when we could have gotten the building for, well, for free at one point. Currently, Mr. Funtman owns that building. He did pay $285,000 for it. He did offer, what is it?
$500,000?
$500,000 for the building. It's a pretty good profit for somebody that's looking out for the town and trying to help us out. Yes, you can make a profit when you're a businessman. But I'm not, I, this is not a public safety building. It's not a police department. I think this is an absolute waste of money to put any studies into this building to tell us that it can't be used. This is the residents' money, taxpayers' money. I know they voted for it. I am ably against this. I think it's ridiculous. And all it is, is to appease a businessman that tried ripping us off in the first place. That's my say.
Okay. Just a note on Mr. Funtman's engineer. He did kind of, I don't know if it's cursory, but he just did a review of the building. There's nothing in writing, but he just said, basically, that he looked for anything that would rule out the possibility of renovating the building. So, I did call him and talk to him about a few things, but he told me it's been many years since he did an assessment. 20 years, so.
That's very, that's a lot of money.
And he's, and he's not, as far as, he's not working now. I mean, his business, I tried calling one number, and it wasn't in service. It was on his litterhead here. So, I think, you know, when we talk about Tecton, they've done, how many police stations or public safety complexes have they worked on?
Quite a few, quite a few. I mean, you know, between 30 to 40, you know, within Massachusetts. And then nationally, they've done some in the Northeast. So, they certainly do have the experience. You know, one of the other things as part of the designer selection law, which is part of Chapter 30B, is a written selection of procedures. Designer selections and these types of services are based on a request for qualifications. It's not based on price. This is qualifications to determine whether or not this firm has the ability to complete and to know what they're doing to make this assessment. And so, when we get to that phase, and I would recommend that we will get to that phase once we know what our final option is going to be that we're all gonna get behind. We don't know what our final option is right now, but when we do have a site that has been selected, and this is our final option, at that point, the designer selection law should be used, and we should adopt written selection procedures that is adopted by the board on how we're going to select the architect and the engineer who are going to be involved in the design and the final renderings of the project. So that's when we'll do the procurement and do the qualifications right now, then. Right now, we are still just in our assessment mode. We're trying to assess our options. We're not in the designer selection law, and that's why I feel that this particular, if the town wants to continue using Tecton, I think it's well within its rights to do so.
Okay. So again, we're not looking for the lowest bidder at this point. We're looking for somebody who knows what they're doing.
And even, even under the designer selection law, you're looking at somebody who has the best qualifications. It's an RFQ, not an RFP. This is an RFQ process, so we're looking at qualifications. Does this person have 25 years of experience? Does this person have 30 years of experience? Does this person have 100 people on staff? Does this people have 20 people on staff? Do this people, do they have these certifications? Does this one doesn't have the certifications? So you're basing it on qualifications.
Yeah, and so the CDBG grants that I've participated in, there were maybe 15 different questions. And they're the same thing. Do you have an engineer with X number of years, you get an A?
Right.
If it's, you know, a level down, you get a B. A level down, you get a C. And then you add up all the points. And you picked, basically, you picked the one that was the highest qualifying, and then you looked at the prices.
Right. The prices are not, the prices, you could pay more, you know. It's not based on the lowest bid.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, ultimately, if you had a tie, then the money would factor in.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, oftentimes, we pick the highest qualified one out of, say, three bidders, and they weren't the most expensive. They were middle, maybe even the least.
Right.
So.
I think it's clear at Tecton, because they do have the most experience. They've been in town. They've been doing stuff. They know the buildings. They know what's going on. They've done many of these buildings in the past. Mr. Funtman's engineer hasn't practiced in 20 years?
I would assume that's probably right.
And the laws have changed many times.
Yes.
In, in, in 20 years, 10 years, 5 years, laws have changed. What you could have done 20 years ago is not what you can do now. You know, so he's clearly unqualified for this, this aspect of this. Tecton, they're very familiar with everything. They do very good presentation. They brought up aspects that we never even thought of inside those buildings and what to look for. You know, the ingress, egress in the building. You know, it, the ingress, egress in the buildings, uh, protection, you know, force protection issues. Um, you know, being able to park the vehicles, having vehicles separately parked from, um, the public. Why that's important, having, um, uh, a port where you can bring in somebody that you take into custody. Um, having that sectioned off, how that's important because you can't, you don't want somebody getting away from you and running into traffic and getting hit by a car if you don't have full control of that person. Cause you're liable for them, the town's liable for them. If that person were to get away from a police officer and run into traffic and get hit and they're in handcuffs, that's, that's gonna be a lawsuit for the town. That's money we're gonna have to pay and now we're gonna save a couple dollars and risk of being sued in the future. Or just do it right the first time and not have to worry about it.
Yeah.
And I would like to do it right the first time. I don't wanna spend money on, keep on kicking the can down the street. Um, one of the things that were brought up in the meeting is we've been talking about this for years. This problem has been talked about for over twenty years at least, and nobody has done anything about it. And it's getting really frustrating because here we are, we are trying to do, do stuff about it. Some residents support what we're doing and some are very vocal about what we're doing in opposition. And we hear the same comments from these people over and over and over. Why did they do this? Why did they do that? Did they do this? Did they check that? Yes, we have. We've gone through all those options. We've been dealing with this for, as long as, you know, Jim's been with us, as before that, we've all been on. We've looked at all the different options and what's going on through that building. We inspected the buildings. We've gone through these buildings. I've been into Old Town Hall where the police, police station is, from the very bottom of the basement to the very top of the attics. Okay? We've all explored it and we know the conditions they're in. This is just continually talking and talking and talking and kicking the can down the road. Something has to be done here. I know people don't wanna spend the money, but it's either, we could have spent the money twenty years ago, ten years ago. Now we're here again. It's a lot more. A lot has changed. Building codes are very different. We wait another ten years down the line.
Yeah.
Building codes are gonna be even more different and more stringent and it's gonna be even more expensive. The one thing about building is it's not going down. It's just going up. And the longer we wait, the more it goes up. If we don't do this soon, you know, it's, it's, I, I don't know what to say, you know? I don't wanna pay for it either, but.
Yeah.
It has to be done.
And I think we've been responsive to people's criticisms and, and comments. Uh, we started with the three sites. We now have those three sites still certainly in consideration. We have.
Well, before we even started with those three sites, we looked at every alternate building in the town. We've looked at the mail complex. We've looked at, um, Station B. We've looked at, you know, any other buildings that were available in town. We looked at everything we could do and it, it just wasn't gonna be a factor. So it's not like we just started with three, three public safety buildings and said, let's go with this.
No.
We've looked at every option before that.
Right.
And people need to understand that.
Right, and we've also been responsive. We've now, we're now looking at a police station only, um, at a third of the cost. We're looking at renovating the fire station. We brought the bank building up as yet another option. And people are interested in looking that, at that, so that's fine. So I think there's more than enough stuff on the table that we should be able to shake something out. I think we're closer. We're a lot closer, so hopefully.
I'll be closer, I'll be closer when the chief's putting a key in a door to a new building from his department.
Yeah. And then what about the fire station? Um, do we wanna look at a different firm on that one?
We can certainly do that if, if, you know, if you, if you'd like. Um, you know, I think that there needs to be a discussion between, uh, the chief and whoever's doing this of what the chief's expectations, you know, are going to be and what he's looking to get accomplished. Um, and try to nail that conversation down a little bit and, um, you know, that's certainly something that, you know, can be looked at.
Yeah, you know, the other thing with Tecton is they've already talked to everybody in town. I mean, they've talked to both chiefs, they've talked to the employees.
Jeff was out here today talking to the chiefs.
Yeah, so, you know, unfortunately, I mean, we can look at somebody else for a portion of this, but in a way, they may have to start over again on, on some stuff, so. Um, at least Tecton has the background now. They know the town, they know what the needs are.
Well, Tecton's already been through the fire station already.
Oh, yeah.
They've already gone through that building, so that's, you know, they've already done half the job.
I know.
You know, now, now you just wanna, you just want them to, as Derek would say, shift around a little bit maybe? And, you know, put, put a couple doors here, extend the building this way, extend the building that way, extend the building this way.
Yeah.
What can you do, you know?
Yeah. All right, do you have comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, well. Besides that, we were talking about who to do it. That, that's just circumstantial. I'm sure we're gonna get somebody really good to do it. But this was a article in, in a town meeting, like it or not, it passed. So right now, a family of four is gonna pay fifty bucks to do this thing about the bank. Literally, that's how it is. A family of four is gonna pay fifty bucks to do this stuff. What are the answers? What are we gonna answer? What are we gonna tell them the result? What is, what is it gonna answer? You know, as a designer myself, oh yeah, I can do whatever you want over there. It could be very expensive. Or are we gonna get, oh no, that building doesn't work for this? Are we just getting answers? Are we getting a, yes, we can do it. We have option A. We tear everything down, we make a new one. This is how much? Or we renovate the building, existing building, and this is how, as good as you can get with this much? Because the people are looking at these answers. We made a facility study and we got three or four answers. Well, this is how much, this is how much, and you get to choose. Now with the bank, um, like I said, a family of four is gonna pay fifty bucks to do this. And what, what, what are the answers? Are we gonna get a design and say, oh, this is your, the bank, this is how it's gonna look like as a police station, and by the way, it's gonna cost you this amount of money? Right? So I think we have to concentrate, what are we gonna, with this money, what are we gonna tell the people?
What kind of answer are we gonna?
What answer are we looking for? Is it a yes or no? That shouldn't cost sixty grand, you know, ask an expert. Hey, you think we can do a police station over here and get it? Or do the whole thing and say, well, your police station over there is gonna cost you this much? Then we use the full sixty grand.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's gonna have to identify, first of all, can we even renovate the building? If so, what's involved in renovating the building?
Right.
How, how, how much do we have to renovate? Um, is it gonna be a complete tear down? Dig up the fieldstone basement, lay in brand-new foundations, put a new building on there? Because at that point, why would we tear a building down in the middle of our town? When we could just move down the road a little bit, buy clear land and just put a building on it? You know, how much more is it gonna cost us to tear down a building to build it up? Or if we could even renovate it, what's gonna have to be involved in renovating it to bring it to that category four building? And to make it specific for the design of, of a police station that meets the requirements of a police station? Because you can't just, you can't just say, well, I threw some desks in there and I, I put some concrete in that window there in the front. Cause you can't keep that big bay window in the front of the building.
All those windows go.
That, that's, that's gonna be gone, you know, eh, you know, what's the building gonna look like now? If, you know, I, my question was, if you're gonna renovate that building, renovate the bank, what is the bank gonna look like now as a category four building, all done, and what's that gonna cost us?
You know, as, as, as an architect and as a resident, here my fifty bucks, I'll look for an expert and say, hey, can we do this or not? If he says yes, how much? Those are the answers that the public is looking for.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, that's what we're looking for.
You know, and what do we get from that? You know, because it, maybe it's how, what is the best way to use our resources? We got sixty, but we don't have to spend it all at once. You know, you can say, look, look into it. Do you think it's feasible to do it? If it's feasible to do it, then you go to phase two and you put a prize on it. But if at the beginning they say no, well, everything is possible because.
Well, the problem is, if they say no, then you're gonna get all the conspiracy theorists out there saying, well, why did they say no? What did they say no to? What makes it no? Did they look at this? Did they look at that?
They should be looking for.
And I'm sure somebody's gonna grab some hack engineer that hasn't worked in twenty years and come in and say, um, yes, you can do this. You're just gonna lift the building up. You know, lift it up, pull out that foundation, build a new foundation, put it back down, tear off all the siding and the exterior sheeting, and then put up all this category four weather, weather-inforced sheathing. You know, put in all new electrical work, put in all new plumbing, heating, ductwork, and then run, uh, generator out there. And oh, by the way, we can knock off the back of the building and put a couple bays in there for, you know, driving in, you know? You know, somebody, as you say, you can get anybody to draw you something and say, yeah, how much? You know, oh, you guys wanna spend a hundred million dollars on a building? Sure, I could build that building for you, you know?
What, what I, my point I wanna make is to let the public know that, you know, we wish it will work out. It's either the bank, it's either here or there. But like you said, David, we, it's enough is enough. Twenty, twenty-plus years looking into this, we're trying to get something done. It, it is, we're not driven by, oh yes, I really wanna do it in the bank, guys. That's why we wanted to. No.
Let's get the building done.
It's under a construction code and we just gotta do it and better do it right. You know, I think somebody would.
I think that's the, the important thing is being able to do it right the first time. So we don't have to revisit this in ten years or fifteen years. This, this building's gonna be built in the next seventy-five to a hundred years.
Ideally, ideally in the position that we are right now, it would be really nice to get the police station in phase one with a phase two fire department because what's gonna happen, we're gonna do a police station now. In ten years, fire department's gonna be desperately needing for a new space. And that's why the feasibility study we did contemplates both. And, you know, look at doing phase one and then phase two for the target.
Really, I think they only said one site is feasible for doing that, though, breaking it up. And, you know, that's, we'd have to purchase that site.
Yeah.
To be able to have two separate buildings and kind of join them there.
Well, you'd have to prep, if, if it was at the, um, the Highway Barn site, you'd have to, if you built a police station, you'd have to prep it to, well, it wouldn't work anyway. Cause the fire station was on the first floor, right? Yeah, that would.
You couldn't.
No.
There's only one, there's only one property that we have that they could have done that where it was side by side. And, you know, we'd have to purchase that land.
Yeah.
But once we own that land, we own it.
Yeah.
And once you do that initial prep work and you get it all done, in that survey, then in ten years, we could potentially build a fire station. But my fear is, and I know a lot of other people's fear is, is if you don't do it all at once, in ten years, people are gonna sit there and look at it and say, oh my God, remember how much our taxes went up for that police station? Do we wanna do that again? And it's never gonna happen.
No.
Nobody's gonna vote for it and it's gonna cost even more. You know, it's, it's probably gonna cost, in ten years, it's probably gonna go up another third.
Yeah, probably.
And, you know, now you're gonna join an older existing building to a brand-new structure with different building code now because it's, ten years have passed, you know? It's, it's complicated. It's not that easy and, you know, I, the, ultimately, the priority is the police. We all agree. Everybody in town agrees. We have to get the police out of that building and put them in something that's safe and healthy to be in for them. And also safe for the residents to be at. And if they take somebody into custody, somebody that they can properly handle and be able to book them and process them safely, not only for the officers, but the, the individual that's being, um, arrested. Because that person might not be of sound mind. They might not think it, be thinking what they're doing at that point in time because they may be impaired on something. And, um, you know, that, that person could be a danger to themselves. So you wanna make that environment as safe as possible and for the officer, so you don't have any injuries. So you can get that person processed easily.
Yeah. Was it, was there a question out? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, my question, it's not really a question, it's a statement. We took a vote for the, um, study on the bank station, the bank, bank building. For what, sixty grand?
Yeah.
Study? We already know that that building cannot house a police department because it doesn't meet, uh, category four standards. So why are we throwing money at a study where we know it's gonna fail?
Well, the, the study's gonna say, how much would it cost to make that?
I know what it's gonna say, but we already know it's gonna fail.
It's because the voters said their opinion and the voters spoke and they said, let's do this because we want another option other than what you're doing, even though we've looked at all this stuff.
Well, right, well, we're different. We know it's gonna fail. We wanna throw taxpayer money at something that we know is going to fail.
It's not just gonna tell you what it's gonna take to bring it up to level.
I understand that, but we know category four says you're not gonna make it.
Like I said, sometimes we don't like what the out, the outcome of the voting, you know?
I understand that, but why, your, your job as a select board is also to say, hey, no, we're not gonna spend this money because we already know it's not gonna pass the, the program. It's not gonna be a lot.
That's why I said, what answers can we get? Can we get the first answer? You know, we don't have to spend the sixty grand to have a professional say, look, guys, this is not good or, look, guys, this is really good.
They, he can make it pass on level fours. What's it gonna cost to do that?
Right. So we have a ten million dollar option, right? At the Highway Barn standalone police station. What if it costs nine million dollars to bring the cornerstone bank building up to level four? Or what if it costs twelve? At least we know that number. Maybe they both cost the same and then we can say, well, do you want, do you wanna do the, the cornerstone or you wanna do a new building? But, well, we need that information because right now, the question is up in the air.
But you kinda already have that information.
Yeah, but we're not engineers here.
No, I'm saying, you already have that information from the first go-around on the inspection of the buildings.
There, well, yeah, but nobody really assessed it to a level that it needs to be.
No, Brenda, Brenda, when she went through, she looked through and she did, it's not feasible. But she, she did it as the building commissioner.
Yeah.
And we're talking about the study that you did for all three sites.
That wasn't part of one.
You looked at this, you looked at this, you looked at that.
They, they looked at, uh, land that was available to us.
Right, but there they told you that all the buildings had to meet the category four standard. We know the bank doesn't meet category four.
But that wasn't, I don't think that was part of their scope is to take an existing building and really dig into it. I think they were looking at what's, what's available, um, I don't know, maybe an easier level quote. Um, as opposed to really digging into a building and saying, okay, we've gotta shore this up, we've gotta, you know, rip the insides out, we gotta put an addition in the back, that kind of thing. I think it's a lot more involved.
In the end, it's just gonna show, this is not a feasible site. And, and have, and having. and have, and have a certified engineer with experience to look at it and say, yeah, this can't be done, and if you were to do this auction, this is my recommendation. Um, whether it would be a complete tear-down of the building, okay, how much is it gonna cost us to tear down the building? We already know it costs, it's gonna cost over a million dollars to tear down the old town hall. How much is it gonna tear down to tear down the bank building? Now, is that gonna be added on to this cost now? So if it costs us a million dollars just to tear the building down, to create a vacant lot, to put, to put a new police station there, now is the footprint big enough of that bank? Is it, is it, you know, gonna be large enough space for the police department to be built on? And built, be built as a category four building? Is there parking gonna be there?
My only point in bringing this up is to make sure that everybody out, everybody out there knows that, hey, we already know the building is not gonna pass this, but yet we're gonna spend sixty grand to tell you.
It's what happens when a local business gets involved and wants to sell a building, and they turn around and they say, hey, guys, why don't you support me on this? And people jump up there and they vote on it, because they want another option, because it's cheaper, and they think it's gonna be cheaper, well, now we're gonna spend up, up to sixty grand.
But all you're doing is taking money that we don't have already, spending it on something that we don't need to spend it on, or we need to spend it on the fire department and police department that we won't have the money to spend to do it.
I absolutely agree with you. I am absolutely opposed to this project, I think this is absolutely ridiculous to do, but the voters voted for it, and this is something we gotta do now, and as Mr. Belize said, if anything, they're gonna look at the building and say, yes, this is what you can do, you can do this, but it's gonna cost you this much money, or no, I would recommend it because of these reasons, and you can't get this building to this category, so.
The, the voice of public opinion was they wanted to look at the building, so I, for us to say, no, I, I, I just don't feel.
That's where we split, because you have a lawful duty, as the select board, to be fiduciary people and look after that money. And if you're gonna go down the road to spend it on something we know is not gonna pass, that's not doing the job.
Go ahead.
Voters were clear, they understood how we were spending the money to do an analysis. Pete Frazek from Twenty One School Street. I was there at the meeting, Jimmy spoke about it, that it was just to see if it's feasible, that's all it is. Your job is to do what we voted for, you had a chance at town meeting to sway the crowd, and you did it. So voters, the voters chose to spend the money to see if it's feasible. And it, it shouldn't be any more debate than that. If it isn't feasible and the study is done, whatever Jim comes up with, then the voters will decide, yes, it's not the route we can go. But it's more than just the old building, it's downtown located, that's what people were looking at. And you, you don't talk about that too much. You think they just want to build one on the back road? If it was the same position downtown, you're right, a vacant lot, I think they would jump on that with a new building. So.
We don't, we don't have that property.
I know, we know, but I'm just saying, it's more about location than it is, and.
Well, so, I, I think it's good that, that we had it on there, because it's gonna be a yay or nay, and we can either leave it on the table, or the study will say, take it off the table, and it'll be a more definitive answer.
No, it's always gonna be somebody out there saying, what about this, what about that, what about this building? And then another sixty thousand dollars, and then another sixty thousand dollars, and then another sixty thousand dollars, because we're looking at all these other buildings that aren't feasible. And at some point, we gotta rip the damn Band-Aid off and do this, and get the damn project done. The police need a police station, they need a place to go. Everybody acknowledges that, we all agree to that. Now it's, how do we get there? And again, we're kicking another can down, down the road in a different direction now, and chasing that instead of just working on the project and getting it done. This is just somebody being a businessman, and I'll give him that, and he wants to sell his building, if he was that happy and that, that proud of the town that he helped build, he would donate that building for free for us and pay for the damn study of sixty thousand dollars to show if it can and can't be done. And that's what I would like to see, somebody who has done so much for this town, as he says, donate the building that we could've got free in two thousand twenty-two if he stayed out of the deal, and pay for the sixty thousand dollars, show how much you care.
I forgot what I was gonna say, I, I think it was more like, you know, Peter, the, yes, the location, it's a prime location, it's a small site, and it's a small building. You know, as a designer, I can tell you, yeah, we can make it work, how much it's gonna cost, that depends. So what, that's what we wanna know, can we do it for how much? You know, I hate to pay my fifty bucks to family of four, but at least I'm gonna be assured that, you know, that, that's the way to go, or not to go.
All right, so we've kind of beat this to death, right? Is there any further?
No, I just wanna say, you know, I know I'm in favor of doing, not, not really doing this, spending the money, just because I know what I know, okay? Um, and to me, it's asinine to go and chase this can when we know it's gonna fail.
You know, Neil, as a designer, I can tell you, no, it's not gonna fail, because I can take everything out and build it brand-new, it's gonna cost more.
Yeah, it's gonna cost more.
So it is, you know, yeah, the fail, the building may fail, but the project can go on.
Well, that's the thing, it's, if you have an, oh, infinite amount of money to throw at it, you can do anything you want.
Exactly, as a designer, what do you want?
But again, I, I can tell you right now, and I'm gonna make my prediction, we're gonna pay the sixty thousand dollars, they're gonna say, eh, it's not really a good site for this, it can be done. We may purchase the building for five hundred thousand dollars, that's five hundred thousand dollars gone right there. And the designer's probably gonna tell us that you need to tear the building down. Now we're gonna spend another million dollars on tearing a building down. Then it's gonna be another ten million dollars, because now instead of being wider, we have to go up taller, and it needs elevators and everything else inside of it. So now you're gonna be at the ten to eleven million dollar building, on top of the million dollars to get rid of the building, and the five hundred thousand dollars to pay off, you know, buying the building. So I just hope, in the end, residents get what they want, because we've done our research, and this is a ridiculous can-chasing mission, like I agree with you, but we'll spend the sixty thousand dollars and waste the town's money.
All right. That being said.
It's my business.
Yes. All right, let's move on to number three, with, which is review with a possible vote to sign an access agreement for nine sixty-eight Main Street. So this is an agreement that, um, lets us get into the building, right? Releases Mister Fountain from liability if one of us is in there.
Releases the town of liability too.
Right.
Yeah, our attorney's gone through this.
They drafted it.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, um, you know, I, I read through it, I'm not a lawyer, I mean, it seems fine, I guess. Yeah?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I don't know if that's a compliment.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
He was trying to tell you, you look into electrical.
Yeah.
Very.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I admire about you the most.
All right, so, yeah, the comments are?
So, yep, so this was drafted by, um, by KP, um, I had asked him for this, so, once that article had passed. Um, it, it does release the town of any liability, uh, it allows, um, the town or its agents' access to the building. Um, I had presented a copy.
Doesn't allow us to take samples for lead, asbestos, and things like that, is beating?
There, there's a hazmat assessment, and once we get into that, um, there'll, there'll be a, um, there'll be a, a section on that, um, that, that we can have as a, as a side agreement as well, um, and that may be in the future. Um, but this just allows us access, in our, in our agents' access, starting from today till May first. I don't think we're gonna need it until May first, but, you know, just, just to give us some, some.
With, with your comment in mind, I think there was something in here where we have to, you know, pick up any trash and debris that we leave and restore things. So if we have to punch a hole in a wall to look at something behind, then we just need to patch the wall.
Yeah, you have to be cognizant of, 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 you know, if, if there's anything left behind that we have to, you know, clean up after ourselves. I'm not anticipating much, you know, there, but, you know, um, you know, the, um, this has been presented to, uh, to Jim, um, and he did sign it this week. So that's waiting for the board's, uh, signature.
All right.
He said that he would provide he with keys to the building, um, and, and we would have them on, on hand, and as our agents needed them, we would give them out.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to accept this agreement?
The access agreement?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the access agreement as written. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? David Dufresne?
David's aye.
Richi Hucker, aye, motion carries, so we'll just need to sign it out, okay?
Mr. Rich, I'm gonna excuse myself.
Okay.
Before I leave, uh, could I ask again about the, uh, cat files for the, uh, feasibility studies, that we get copies of?
Yes, I will get those for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, do you wanna take off?
I do, I have to attend, um, Babe Boggs', um, um, teacher contract negotiations, so. I was gonna go up to Babe Boggs.
All right.
Thank you.
So when I get, uh, when I get any, uh, weekly report, weekly report?
That's next, next, next.
Save it up.
Christmas gift.
Good luck.
All right.
All right, so moving on, police chief monthly report for October twenty twenty-five.
That's me, Chief.
How does she?
For the month of October, we lost twelve hundred and eight calls of service, investigated one felony, assisted arrest, several reports, three on the arrest, two more arrests, seventeen summons arrests, a total of twenty-two from P C, one parole arrest, ninety-eight motor vehicle stops, fifty-one citations, and ten motor vehicle accidents. And for the month, in the first month, the department assisted the schools and bus company for their first bus evacuation job. In the afternoon, Chief Lavoy and I attended the seventh day school to speak to the students about safety. On the seventh day, I attended a class run by the M P T C and the Post Commission. The class was to go over a few updates coming in twenty twenty-six. On the third, I noted civilian police advocate, most elections, most domestic violence advocate that provides services to the towns of Warren, Ware, and Harvard, and Branch Street. Also on the third, we received notice that we were awarded a grant for twenty thousand two hundred and ninety-five calls from the high of the safety. This grant will provide us two more of those digital speed signs, as well as pay for extra patrols throughout the year. Certain times of the year, they have, like, the clicker tickets, you see, that'll, that's what the bias patrols for that. On the seventh, I attended my monthly security meeting. On the fifteenth, the state sent out technicians to update S G S equipment. Uh, this is a system that connects the police department in the state with the criminal justice information system and registry. On the twentieth and twenty-first, we conducted interviews of the open patrolman's position. Thank you, Jim Ferrar, Chief Lavoy, Lieutenant Wickham, Sergeant Williams, while sitting through the interviews. On the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, the entire department went through firearms and K S R training. These are both yearly required trainings, and the second firearms training we conducted in the spring. Also for training this month, Sergeant Williams attended a little light firearms instructor course. Sergeant Williams will conduct a department training in the future. And finally, on the thirty-first, I attended the town's trick-traping and Halloween parade. As usual, the chief of law in his department put on a great parade in a costume contest for the kids, which I get to vote on every day. And one other thing, I just got this yesterday, actually, but I wanted to bring it to attention and bring it to the town's attention, is, uh, I got notice last night. Uh, every year, the dispatch center does an awards in December, they, they, one of the awards they give out is a exceptional service award. So last night, I got this nice email, it says, uh, they were pleased to share with us that, uh, this exceptional service award for twenty twenty-five. This award is presented by C M R E C C to an officer firefighter who goes above and beyond typical duties, demonstrating exceptional dedication to public safety and outstanding support of the dispatch team. Um, so what it says is, uh, your, your actions this year clearly reflected qualifies we seek to our effective communication, strong collaboration with dispatch, problem-solving, and the pressure, and positive last, lasting impact on both the community and the broader public safety team. Your professionalism and commitment to safety was truly set you apart. And I'm, I'm happy to say, and proud to say, that Officer Shay, uh, will be accepting this award at the end of this month, at a ceremony on the twenty-ninth. He was nominated by the dispatch center, and they ultimately chose him to receive the twenty twenty-five exceptional service award.
Wow, congratulations, Officer Shay.
Congratulations to him, very proud of that, um.
So when you get that, he's gotta bring it around.
We'll post a little picture of him with it.
Yeah, yeah.
So he'll do a tour around.
Excellent, very good.
Yep, very nice, though.
All right, any questions?
No, no.
All right, thanks, Pete.
You got it?
All right. Review with a possible vote to adopt a sustainable purchasing policy for the town. Is that, that's Board of Health, right?
Yeah.
Can you give us some background? I mean, it seems pretty obvious, like, we tried.
Our issue is, um, we have a paid cash account of a hundred dollars, just like everybody else does in the town.
No, this is the sustainability purchasing.
Oh, this is the, um, equipment for the, uh, the week.
No, that's different. America Recycles Day?
Oh, that's recycling.
Yeah.
It's a program, it's a grant they get once a year, um, they're increasing on the grant. Um, uh, America Recycles Day was, was in November on the fifteenth. This part of recycling dividends program and the S M R P grant will be required to have updated to become environmentally preferable products, sustainable procurement policy. This will be required by June twenty-sixth, and will be a great statement if we do it early. We're trying to get ahead of the, the system in here. By updating our policies, not just about recycled content, but establishes specifications for sustainable and climate preferable products and services on statewide contracts, whilst there's cost-effective, responsible purchasing choices that help reduce impacts on public health and the environment, and works with agencies, departments, and others to encourage their use in public operations. And if you wanna look at, there's a video online that you can go through and explain the whole.
This is something we vote on each?
Every year.
So this is a, a standard thing we do.
It's a standard, it just increases our, our, uh, uh, statement in the recyclable programs, and, uh, gives us the grant money. Uh, there's, there's actually gonna be a believe and elevation funds coming out that we wanna get early, so we can do more, uh, recyclable programs in town.
By entering in this, it shows we participate in a recycling program for the town, we foster that, and that gives us points towards.
Earlier in the year, we had somebody in here about pay recycling.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all part of the same, you know, try to get more recyclables taken care of in town.
Okay, so our motion is gonna be, what, to adopt a sustainable purchasing policy?
Yes.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt a sustainable purchasing policy for the town.
Second, all in favor?
David Dufresne?
Richi Hucker, aye, motion passes. All right, don't sit down. Acceptance of a state program from the Recycling Dividends Program Fund under the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, um, grant to be administered by the Board of Health.
Hey, this is, again, we get, we do this every year, that comes around, um, it is a grant that's awarded eight thousand dollars of funding for drop-off equipment for glass containers, and five thousand for universal waste shed for our transfer stations.
Okay, so do we need to vote on anything, or this is just more of an announcement?
This is more of an announcement than anything.
Okay, yeah.
Just so you know, we've got the grant, uh, money is gonna be spent for these purposes.
Awesome. So just a few that require your signature.
Yeah.
Okay.
Me specifically, yeah.
All right, um, and you don't think we need a motion for this, for that?
You know something, why don't we just do one?
Just to cover.
Snap that by.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to accept the grant, um, for the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program.
completed by the Board of Health.
Or administered.
Administered by the Board of Health.
Yeah. Second, all in favor.
David Dufresne.
Richi Hucker aye. Motion carries. Alright, finally, the Board of Health requests, request from the Board of Health to increase their petty cash by a hundred dollars to cover the cost of additional certified mailings.
Yeah, we spend a lot of money on certified mailings every week. And it kind of, we're at the point where we're exceeding our hundred dollar budget.
Okay.
Okay, and it's starting to be, do we spend it out of pocket, or do we do something else?
Yeah, we'll spend it out of pocket.
Okay. We looked at bringing in the pity bows program.
Oh, okay.
But that got shot down by the town administrator.
Okay.
No reason to give me an excuse or an order.
Okay.
He's not really cutting himself, so.
No, I I I mentioned that to Jessica, because that's what we use where I work, and it's a great system. It works fine. But you guys don't like that, that's fine too. So we're looking to increase the amount of petty cash, to about two hundred dollars that we have on hand, so that we can make our payments or purchase whatever we need for certified mailings, because the the amount of mailings that we send out in a week's period of time can fluctuate from two to fifteen or even more, depending on the amount of work that we're doing in the town with housing calls, inspections, and we have to send out correction orders, and sheriff notifications, and all this, and all that has to be by certified mail.
Okay.
So a hundred dollars doesn't go far if you spend it on like that.
I don't see a problem with that. You know, the whole point of the whole petty cash program is to be able to monitor what is actually being sent in hand, and making sure that it's not being used for people buying their lunches or whatever. It's being used for proper stuff, so that's why we track it and make sure it's being done right.
Yeah, we're just, you know, we're just looking at possibly two hundred dollars would be, unless things start getting really, really rampant around here, and start spending a ton of money on it. I think two hundred dollars will be what we need to cover.
Okay.
I'm fine with it. You wanna make a motion?
You're okay?
Yeah, I'm good. I'll make a motion to increase the petty cash by one hundred dollars to cover the cost of additional certified mailings to a total of two hundred dollars for the Board of Health.
Second, all in favor.
David Dufresne.
Richi Hucker aye. Motion carries. Discussion of a possible vote to enter into a contract with tie and bond for engineering services related to the duct work improvement project at the senior setup. So this is another thing to pass at the special town meeting, and this is the engineering work to figure out what needs to be done and what it's gonna cost. And then tie and bond is gonna do the bidding. So we'll basically give us all, do the assessment, do the studies, come up with the plans and whatnot, the tasks, and then do the bidding.
Now, this is, I think this is an issue for some people at the town meeting, because I think they don't understand the process.
Right.
And people are upset that we were allocating money to do an engineering study on what needs to be put into the building and how how to properly heat it versus actually just installing it. So it takes somebody, we gotta hire somebody to come in, do evaluations of the rooms, and identify where duct work needs to be done, how it needs to be run through the building, and specifically do a design of that, and how we can do that most efficiently.
And what it will cost.
And what it will cost to do that project.
Yep.
So that's what we're doing. This is part of the process. We have to go through this process to be able to spend money on a project of this cost, because it could get up there to well over a hundred thousand dollars to do an whole new heating system, because they gotta remove all the old duct work. If anything has asbestos lining, because that that can be an issue, where some of the old duct duct work was outlined with asbestos to keep it insulated, insulated. And if there's any of that, to identify that, and, you know, get that cleaned up, because that has to be taken out and then baited properly. So it could get pretty expensive, so this is identifying what we need to do for that whole process. And as you can tell, I'm wearing my sweatshirt still, because it's cold in here.
Yeah, it's chilly here, for sure.
Because these vents don't work at all. We have a main trunk going through the middle of the building for duct work, and all it's doing is heating the attic.
Yep.
So there's a couple spots in in the main room where where the senior residents are. The 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 heat is actually coming out through the light fixtures. Remember, we seen that last time? It's like, it wasn't coming from a vent, it was coming from the light fixture. It was nice.
So the thing is probably running all the time. It's trying to heat the building.
The amount of money we're spending is probably crazy yet.
And wear and tear on the new H V D.
Yeah.
Alright, well, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Nope, let me see. I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with tie and bond for engineering services related to duct work improvement project at the senior center.
Second, all in favor.
David Dufresne.
Richi Hucker aye. Motion carries.
Warrants bills?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Payroll eleven dash twenty-six for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Payroll eleven SW dash twenty-six for one thousand five hundred dollars. Accounts payable twenty-one dash twenty-six for nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty cents. Accounts payable twenty-two dash twenty-six for ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second, all in favor.
David Dufresne.
Richi Hucker aye.
Okay.
That was for the auction, for the auction.
Oh, okay.
Alright, I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Jason Harris portable toilets for a hundred and forty dollars. P E A C Solutions for five hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Masters Telecom for ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. K P Law P C for five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and nine cents. USPS for seventy-eight dollars. Board of Selectment Office petty cash for seventy-three dollars and seven cents. Turley Publications for a hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. S B A Structures for one thousand eight hundred and six dollars and forty-seven cents. Entree Technologies for three thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Beck Plumbing and Heating for five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-two cents. Copla and Copla for seven hundred and two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second, all in favor.
David Dufresne.
Richi Hucker aye. Motion carries. Alright, minutes from eleven twenty twenty twenty-five, which was the pre-pre meeting and the pre-meeting for the special town meeting.
Be agreed.
Pre-brief. Yeah, I'm good. Make a motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for eleven twenty two thousand twenty-five.
Second, all in favor.
David Dufresne.
Richi Hucker aye. Alright. New business. I'll throw this under new business. National Grid is installing smart meters. I guess this is gonna be everybody in town. You probably should have gotten an email. I know I got my email on the fourteenth of November. So there's gonna be a third party vendor going out, Utility Partners of America, and they're gonna be swapping out the the meters. They don't really have a timeline, so it's just gonna be ongoing until they get them.
Did they tell, tell us how much they're gonna charge us for using their smart meters?
No, they did not.
And that'd be interesting, because I'm hearing from people that it does cost for us to have the smart meters. So your electric bill may go up again for that.
Yeah. We can potentially have somebody come out to a future meeting if we want.
I think we should.
Yeah.
That might.
I'd love to talk to the electric company.
Yeah. Can you make a note to have Jim call somebody?
What if we don't do this? Yeah, what if we don't do the smart meters?
I don't, if I get a new house with a new meter, why do I want another new meter?
Yeah, especially if I have to pay for it. Why would I want something that I have to pay for?
I mean, they can read mine now from the street. Why do they need to add an upgraded smart meter?
Yeah, I know.
Now, I'd like to know that. Or if there's a chance to say, okay, if there's an appeal period where we can sit there and say, well, the Warren residents will not pay for the the meter. They won't pay the monthly fee for it.
Yeah, I don't know if that's possible, but it's certainly worth asking.
Be good to have a governor that would stick up for us on that one.
Also, while we're in new business, I I did have an announcement at the top of the agenda, if you want.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Reminder of the toy drive by the Warren Police Patrolman's Association. Donations can be made at the Warren Tree Lighting on December sixth. By the way, there's a tree lighting, too.
Yes, sir.
From four to eight, or until December ninth, at the Warren Police Department.
Very good. Awesome. They do a good job with this each year.
Yeah, they do. Any other new business?
No.
Any old business?
No, no, they're not here, so.
Alright.
I was gonna say, bring up some of the old stuff that we haven't gone over in a while, the credit cards, all that stuff.
Jim's not here. Derek's not here. What?
New business?
New business?
That's still open.
We, yeah, we didn't ask anybody if they want.
Okay, what what do you got?
Oh, we have installed time. The town sign is now, one of them's installed on, I forget the name, a little up there by.
Apple Road.
Apple Road, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen that.
Looks good.
We're still looking for the placement the other side. It was gonna be on railroad. But when I went up and looked at the site, with the Tom Palmer, Warren line, Warren liners, it's actually very narrow space, and if the sign was to go in that spot, it would be right in front of a driveway. Or if you go right past it, it's still in front of the driveway.
So it's not a fine spot, especially on that road, you don't wanna.
It's not a fine spot, so it's not a feasible location for it, so we're still looking to place the second one.
So the other side of sixty-seven, then, right?
No.
Can't do sixty-seven.
Oh, because there's a town, or?
It's a state highway. Warren Road.
Yeah, but that other side is too, or where does the state highway begin on this side?
It's the whole town. It goes through the whole town, State Road.
Well, so why can't you put it on the Westbrook Field side?
It's still State Road.
Right, but we were gonna try and put the sign on the State Road there anyway.
I know, but.
And we have a sign already.
They have.
You have two signs down on sixty-seven and Palmer.
We'd have to get permission from them.
Okay.
We can get permission.
Yeah, highway has to do that.
Yeah. Well, didn't they have to do this one?
Yeah, we have, I believe.
Yeah, they had to do it. I don't know, those are nice signs.
They are.
The one is up. I can't get the other one onto railroad, because I'm not gonna block you guys from leaving from one way or the other. So we have to find another location to put that sign.
And we can't do on this side, on Westbrook, you know, on the way to Westbrook Field? Like by the conservation land, or past?
I have to look at it to see, is it, do we have the distance there?
Okay, because that's our land. We wouldn't have to get any.
I have to look and see what we've got for room space.
Yeah.
If we can do it there, then that would be the logical place to put it, but we can't. We're trying to cover all into the town, but up here, it's not feasible. You can't do it.
But we do have a sign there, so that's.
Yeah, that's that, that.
Yeah, that metal, it's metal, right?
Yeah, it's a metal, power on one side and one on one on the other side, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's okay, son. Signs are good, right?
Yeah, so we're just wanting, you know, we do have the one up already, we're looking for the other one.
Okay. Alright. Okay, we have correspondence, a Mass DOT Bridge Inspection Report, Brook Road. And how'd you give it to him? This is kinda like the other one we got, like a.
Month and a half ago, maybe?
I mean, overall, the bridge seems okay. We got a lot of sevens, sixes, which is good or satisfactory. We got a couple fives. These are just the different attributes of what they look at.
I like to go through the remarks, because that's when you really kinda get the issue.
Yeah, I didn't see anything like the other bridge.
Minor deterioration.
Yeah.
Some cir, moderate surface rust. That's every bridge in the state.
Yeah.
East end. The ballisters are missing. See photo four.
Which bridge is this?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there they are. Oh, we get, they get fixed holes. Can you crawl through that?
Yeah, it definitely needs a little bit of help, but not as bad as it could be, I guess. This is. I don't know which bridge it is. If you look at Brook Road, it crosses Tufts Brook like five times, so.
Oh, you gave a copy?
So I would say to the public, if you wanna take a look at this report, and any others we get, we'll have them at the at the office, right?
Yeah, highway, Brook Road.
They also, when the when the minutes get posted, if they're in correspondence, they're posted with the minutes as well.
Alright. What else do we have for minutes? I mean, correspondence.
Every time, every time I read these highway reports, I don't think I wanna drive on our roads in this state anymore. Oh, that's acceptable. It's only falling down.
Yeah.
It's gonna only cause moderate injury to death.
Alright, so in addition to your new smart meter, which is gonna cost you more, Xfinity is raising their prices. And I am not gonna go through this, because there's like thirty things on here. But again, this will be with the minutes, and you can see how much your cable bill is gonna go up, or your internet. And then we just got a letter from a woman on Nelligan Terrace who was concerned about a tree. This has been forwarded to the tree warden, and they're on it. Any questions?
No, I'm just glad I don't use Xfinity.
Yeah. Well, soon we'll have Verizon FiOS.
And they ran it right to my house.
Did they?
Oh, yeah.
So they did that.
They did do it.
Wow. See, you didn't think they were gonna do that.
They ran it right down the whole road.
That was the point of that grant.
For the first time, I may actually have internet.
Yeah, people in boonies.
They still haven't connected them yet, at the main line.
Yeah. Oh, they'll never do that.
Well, that's the thing, yeah.
Do you have electricity out there?
We have lanterns.
Okay, alright.
And fireflies, we catch in jars. It's a little dark down in the front, because there's no fireflies.
Alright, comments and concerns?
Any comments? Nope, just, we have the tree lighting this weekend on Saturday. I hope everybody attends. Great event. It's always a lot of fun, and. I hope everybody attends, great event, uh, it's always a lot of fun and, uh, parks, they do an amazing job. Highway department helped them set up, the fire department, police department, SERC, everybody does an amazing job, um, with, with this event. And I definitely hope we get a lot of people there, and definitely bring a toy, how about the police department for the toy drive? Um, good cause, those toys all go to kids in our community, unlike some of the other toy drives where they may go to other communities. You donate, you donate to the kids that are actually in our community.
Yeah.
And helping our residents, our neighbors, so, and then whatever's left over, we try to help out, right?
Yeah.
So definitely, I hope to see everybody there, I'll be there, you gonna be there?
I'll be there.
Detective Moore's been doing a great job with that.
Yeah.
Excellent.
The Grinch is gonna be there, right?
Possibly, maybe, in appearance.
I wanna see him get tased this year. How many toys do I have to donate to get tased with Grinch?
Fuck that one. The school Grinch, you can do the school Grinch.
Okay. Alright, any comments or concerns from the public? Joe. Well, introduce yourself.
Joe Conrad, resident. This coming Sunday is December seventh, eighty-four years ago, that became a special day to this country. In doing some research, I found that my father had a friend who was on. It's called the nineteenth Impetue Regiment, Company C, it's called Field Barracks. Which is spread across the road from, oh geez, Willoughby. Well, it seems when the barracks were being sprayed, the regiment actually mounted a defense. They got up on the roofs of the barracks with M one rifles, they actually shot down one of the fighter planes. Uh, my father's friend was called Arnold Pratt, he survived the war. And later settled in Wakefield, had children. Uh, let's see, Arnold Pratt died in nineteen ninety-two. His son died two years ago, but his grandson, also called Arnold Pratt, is still living in Wakefield. Now, when it comes to battleship Rome. My uncle Peter Drunnick was on the Oklahoma. His duty station at that time was the Inger Room. At seven fifty-seven AM, the Oklahoma took three torpedoes below the waterline. He had barely enough time to scale the forty-foot ladder to the main deck to get out the emergency hatch. At eight oh seven AM, the klaxon sounded to abandon ship, because the, the ship had listed to starboard thirty-six degrees. He literally slid off the deck into the bay. He had to swim a little more than a half mile to land. He was coated in bunker oil, dragged himself out of the water far enough that when the bay caught fire, he would not. I can tell you that he settled in Warren. Uh, although his son died in nineteen fifty-six, his daughter is still alive. She married Michael Prue, who was a history teacher at Playboy. She started out as a teacher in Westbrookfield and is now in a director's position at the Westbrookfield Senior Center. Gentlemen, we are the baby boomers. We always hear about the baby boomers, but now you know of a pill.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Alright, anybody else? Okay, our next meeting is December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, we're still working on the time, I cannot do the evening. Derek has some conflict with the afternoon, but we'll figure a time out, so please watch postings for time. And, no. Would you like to make a motion?
No?
You don't wanna quit?
Yeah.
In the cold?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
David DeFranco.
Richi Harker, aye, we are adjourned.